Oh, good morning, everyone. My name is Bob Lynchide and I'm president and CEO of the Walla Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. You'll notice my background is the mural at Hot Boys in downtown Walla Creek. We want to welcome everybody to this this candidate forum for District Four Supervisor Race in Contra Costa County. Matt Gachard, I'll introduce shortly, will be our moderator today. And we're happy to have you all here for this very important conversation with the candidates relative to important issues for District Four and all of Contra Costa County. As I said before, I'm Bob Lynchide, President and CEO of the Walla Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. And I'm pleased to introduce our Chair of our Civic Affairs Forum, Attorney Matt Gachard, who has passed Chair of our Board and one that we're very appreciative of his his opportunity to moderate today's session. So Matt, would you take it away, please?
Thank you very much, Bob, and welcome, everyone. I'm pleased and very excited to see that almost 100 people have signed up for this very important forum. I'm going to say what the announcement was because this is important. This is a combination of the Walla Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau Forum, Civic Affairs, along with the Concord Chamber of Commerce and the Pleasant Hill Chamber of Commerce. And we're welcoming you for the opportunity to hear from the two candidates vying to replace retiring Karen Mitchoff on the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors. Pleasant Hill City Council Member Ken Carlson and BART Director Deborah Allen will appear. So we have them here in front of us. If you don't mind, I'm going to be a little familiar and call you Ken and Deb because that's how I know you. And that will be part of kind of what Bob talked about. This isn't a debate here today, people. This is a discussion and important issues that people are interested in, we will talk about. Before we get started on those, I want to talk a little bit and welcome our special guests. Not only Ken and Deb, but also you've seen is Bob Lynchide, the CEO of the Walla Creek Chamber of Commerce, Melissa Ray of the Concord. She's the CEO of the Concord Chamber of Commerce and Jeremy Carlson of the Pleasant Hill Chamber of Commerce. Interesting enough, Judy Lloyd, who's the CEO of the Danville Chamber of Commerce, is present today. Very important. Other people outside of District Four are very interested in this this forum today. Mayor Matt Francois of the Walla Creek City Council, Cindy Silva of the Walla Creek City Council, and she's the mayor pro tem. Cindy Darling of the Walla Creek City Council, Luelah Haskew of the Walla Creek City Council, Kevin Wilk of the Walla Creek City Council, our Walla Creek City Manager Dan Buckshai, Ed Del Bacaro, he's the Chair of our Walla Creek Chamber of Commerce, and Kathy Hemingway of Walla Creek Downtown. Now, I know there are lots of people that I should have and could have, but we have a limited amount of time today, so please forgive me, those of you whose names I did not mention. Our Walla Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau is very proud of the work of our Civic Affairs Committee and the programs presented on our Civic Affairs Forums. They're always educational and they're always of interest, not just to our business community, but to all who live and work in our community. Today's forum is particularly important to the community as District Four encompasses parts of Walla Creek, Concord, Pleasant Hill, and Clayton in a large area, county area out among those various cities and out in the Clayton area. Today, we have a discussion with the two candidates to get to know them a bit. And I think that's important. It's these forums, you kind of get to know somebody when you listen to them answer and talk a little bit. And it'll be fun and we'll explore some of the issues which are of concern to those who live and vote in District Four, as well as those outside, and certainly for those who work in District Four. So let's get to it. I've advised the two candidates that we're going to have an initial, about a three-minute introduction that each of them can give. I flipped the coin and Deb wasn't here, neither was Ken, but I called it. And so we, Deb won that coin toss, so we're going to start. And then as we go, we'll just flip the questions back and forth. So anyway, introducing Deborah Allen, who is a BART Board of Directors person. So Deb.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Deborah Allen and yay, I won this. That's great. Hope I keep winning. As an elected official and 35-year business owner who is dedicated to transparent government and keeping the public informed, I deeply appreciate the work of the Chambers of Commerce to keep voters and business leaders informed with both accurate and fair information regarding this election. So thank you for having us. I'm a proven leader who isn't afraid to make difficult decisions independent of special interests and political parties. I spent 35 years as a business owner CPA auditor and Chief Financial Officer. I spent the last 12 years in public service with six years on the Contra Costa Pension Board, looking after $7 billion of county workers' money. I spent the last six years at BART on the BART Board of Directors, where we've been through quite a, quite a fun time in the last three years. And I say that tongue in cheek. I have often been called the adult in the room and the common sense BART Director. And that's because I've always been willing to first listen to all sides of the issue and then question the status quo and seek out more efficient ways where appropriate. Why do we do it this way is a common question of mine. I've fought to ensure that government gets out of the way of progress and will work to remove expensive bureaucratic roadblocks for business, especially for our small businesses. My priorities are modernizing governance, government services, reducing homelessness, working to bring new business to the county and retain the businesses we have. I will get construction moving and support improved public safety and mental health services with a focus on effective programs and collaborative approaches to both. My record as an outspoken, politically independent leader for common sense solutions speaks for itself. But no good deed goes unpunished. I'm actually receiving negative ads misinforming the public about my record and my campaign from a group of labor leaders and garbage interests supporting my opponent. I believe I am the right person at the right time with the best experience to help lead Contra Costa on the County Board of Supervisors. I look forward to your questions today. And for those watching later, you can learn more about me at deboralenn.com.
Thank you. Ken? Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good morning and thank you all at the Walla Creek Chamber, the Pleasant Hill Chamber, the Concord Chamber, everyone for bringing us together this morning. It's a great opportunity to share a little bit about who I am and the insights I have and the work I've done. I am currently running for the District Four Board of Supervisors, and I've been born and bred in Contra Costa. I have spent my entire life here. I attended elementary school, middle school, high school, all right here in Contra Costa County. I lived in South Korea for two years, teaching English and doing missionary work. And after college and retaining my, obtaining my degree from Brigham Young University, I returned home here again to Contra Costa County. And while continuing to work in school, I needed a part-time job and I was hired by the Concord Police Department as a parking intern. And within a few short months, was approached and offered the position of a police officer and sent to the academy. On top of being a police officer for the city of Concord, based on my broadcasting background, the city also hired me to be their first technical director, sitting behind the scenes to live broadcast their city meetings on local access. So I served the residents of Concord for 29 years in a variety of segments. But I'm especially proud of the work I did on their live call-in show, Street Smart, many years serving as a neighborhood patrol officer, a crisis negotiator, and serving on the forensic mental health team. I have always had the intention of being a public servant and to serve in elected office. I retired in 2017, but even before then, in 2012, I became a Pleasant Hill City Council member. And I have served on the Pleasant Hill City Council for over nine years now, almost 10 years. And as part of doing that, I served on our Economic Development Committee, our John Muir Committee Health Fund. I served the Mayor's Conference, representing Contra Costa electeds on the Family Justice Alliance Board, the Airport Land Use Commission, and the Hazardous Materials Commission. I'm an active member in the League of California Cities, serving on the Division Board since 2014, president in 2017, and then represented the East Bay Division on the State Board of Directors. I'm the first openly elected LGBTQ in Pleasant Hill history. And in that capacity, was able to raise the pride flag, recognizing LGBTQ Pride Month in Pleasant Hill in 2015. And after that, in 2017, I was instrumental in crafting and passing our Inclusive Cities Resolution. My time on City Council, we've consistently maintained a balanced budget, even increasing our reserves, paying down our unfunded pension liabilities, all while continuing to meet our CIP programs and not impacting our levels of service. We've even been able to negotiate a land deal and construct a new state-of-the-art library which opened in July. Clearly, there are many priorities that need to be confronted in protecting and serving the marginalized and most vulnerable in our communities. The uninsured, the underinsured, those needing access to healthcare is a key priority for me. Homelessness and housing, addressing the core root of these issues, working to close the education and economic disparity gaps, improving our mental health care and addiction services is an absolute must. And a significant amount of my experience is focused on this through my work in Concord Police Department. When it comes to economic development, I've served on that committee for almost 10 years now, supporting our small businesses through loan and grant programs, hearing their needs. During the pandemic, we created grant programs to support our small businesses and adjusting their business model to adjust to ongoing health mandates, creating parklets, outdoor service areas. We continued this by adding a gift card program to support our independent small businesses and community members with a reward card. And currently, we're supporting them with marketing and digital presence grants to expand their online presence, their marketing, and the functionality. Under my leadership on Pleasant Hill, we've engaged in our first ever climate action plan and we're incorporating that in our general plan update. Climate change and sustainability need to be the core of much of the work we've undertaken and will undertake at the Board of Supervisors. So I'm just happy to look forward to the questions and the answers. I look forward to sharing our ideas with you.
And thank you for both of you for that, that illuminating introduction on, on the part of both of you. I'm going to jump right into some of the significant issues that people have sent to me to ask you today. And first and foremost, I want to talk about the homeless issue. I know both of you have mentioned it. It's a huge issue. I can't tell you the number of people that have asked. And it's kind of a two-part. There's the one part where it's a housing issue mandated by, by the state. But then there's also the mental health issue. And sometimes the two aren't really in sync. So I'm going to start with you, Ken, and just give us, and what I'm going to ask is if we can limit the answers to a minute and a half. I'm not going to put a hook on you and pull you off the screen, either one of you. But we're going to try to because we've got lots to talk about. So anyway, having said that, Ken, why don't you tell us what your thoughts are on that two-pronged homeless issue?
Well, clearly, the homeless issue is, is a challenge that we need to address and I have addressed. I helped author the Core Contract. You know, Contra Costa County created the Core Team. They created one core team when the Antioch Shelter closed. For the entire county, they had one core team. What we decided to do and what we were able to do was craft a contract with the county that the cities paid for. Currently, Walla Creek and Concord are partnered. I helped draft that contract. We brought that to Pleasant Hill Martinez and we partnered with them to create Core to do the outreach. They do the outreach. The issue is we have no place to put them. They need to be able to have somewhere to go, a shelter, supportive, indoor transitional housing. So we need to create housing opportunities specific to our homeless population. We do have a housing shortage and we need to address it. We're facing huge challenges in our communities as our RINA numbers, our regional housing needs allocation numbers have come forward. But we need to build housing. Part of the problem is also the economics. It takes almost over $700,000 to build one affordable housing unit in Contra Costa County. We need to take advantage of opportunities. We've done that in Pleasant Hill. We've created over 500 workforce housing units in our community alone in just the past year. And these are for those that are serving our community in the sense of teachers, firefighters, service workers who are living within that 80 to 120% AMI within our communities. We need to build those housing. We need to provide housing opportunities, just like I've done here in Pleasant Hill.
Thank you. Deb?
Well, thank you. So I've been involved in this homelessness issue since 2017 when I first began on the BART Board of Directors. It was a sobering awakening for me the first time I went out with BART Police Officers to late at night and into certain parts of the system and saw the, the people in crisis. But really, I, I know quite a bit about this topic. Over the last six years, I've worked, even before we were seeing this, you know, really become a major issue in Contra Costa. I've been out on the platforms at 1:30 in the morning with our own core team. I was a part of helping establish the core team for BART, as Ken mentioned, the county program. And, you know, but at the end of the day, we have to peel back the layers here on the homelessness issue. We need to, to view homelessness, the chronic homelessness, I should say, because there are different, different categories. We need to view that as really just a symptom of other deeper things that we need to address. And when we peel back the layers, what we often find, and I think data is starting to now identify this where before it was not, that most of these people who are chronically homeless on the street are, are there because something else has made them unstable, that then we get into the behavioral health issues and the county programs for that. I'll leave that because I'm hoping you ask about that later. And, and, and the addiction programs really. So, but at, at the end of the day, there's no place for them to go. And that should be our first priority. I know at BART, we put together crisis intervention teams. We're spending $10 million a year on that. But it's still the same result as it was before we had crisis intervention teams. There is no one, nowhere for them to go. And so as a supervisor, my focus will be on that problem as well as the behavioral health programs.
Thanks. You know, kind of related to that, it's, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit in my questioning because there is that concept. We look at, say, in Walla Creek, the Trinity Center, and people think, well, that's, that's kind of a model. And everyone wishes we would have Trinity Centers in every city and all over the county, but we don't. And there's this component of not in my backyard. People are saying, you know, we want to address the homeless issue. We want to address these issues, but not in my backyard. And we're aware of what happened in Lafayette, across the Maclanies High School, that fight that's taken a number of years. And now we have in Walla Creek, the Seven Hills issue, which is in the county area development. But ingress and egress will have to be through city of Walla Creek. So we need cooperation. So I guess my question is, how, how do we deal with that not in my backyard? It's, it's good for all of us to say, let's do something. But, but that's a hard one as an elected official to look people in the eyes and say, hey, we're just going to do this. So Deb, I'm going to leave, I'm going to let you start on that.
I'm sorry, who?
You.
Okay. Well, it definitely should not be in your backyard. Okay. I firmly believe that, you know, people who pay their taxes and go to work each day and are trying to just raise their family in a safe and loving environment, they should have some say in this too, as to what goes in their backyard. So I think really the answer here is for us to find more longer-term facilities. We have these overnight shelters that doesn't, you know, that helps a person for one night. That doesn't help them long-term. There are some great programs out there. Trinity Center, I believe, does not do much how, actual housing. They are more of a connective program and they do great work at that. But really, the answer needs to be for some, some longer-term programs, like some of actually their faith-based programs that do this very well for 18 months to help a person stabilize their life. These are complex behavioral health problems. They don't get solved by an overnight shelter. So I'm, I, my focus will be, and I believe there's some efforts underway on this, really even regionally, not just in our county. My focus will be on that longer-term part of how do we find a place where somebody can actually live for six months or a year or eat and, and, and have wraparound services provided to them to help them with the things that keep them unstable.
Okay. Ken?
We face this not in my backyard attitude on, on several things. And it is challenging us as elected leaders, whether it's a housing development or a commercial development. We, we face those challenges and we have to do what's in the best interest of our community as a whole. When it comes to the, to the homeless issue, it really is creating supportive housing. There are models. The Trinity Center is a great model, even if it's in the overnight parking lot. It's a great model to get things started, but it isn't a long-term solution. What we need to do is build supportive housing. Housing, and there, and there are models of this where the housing is surrounded or surrounding a community center or service center essentially, where you can be onsite and get all of the services you need. We developed this model when we developed the Family Justice Center for our victims of interpersonal violence. Instead of having to go in 10 different directions to get the services you need and scatter yourself across the county, all the services you need are in that service of, whether it's mental health or addiction services, school tutoring for your children, if there's children involved, all of those services can be onsite. And there's models that we can replicate. And in order to get the ground, really to hit the ground running, we have to partner with our nonprofit community. They have filled the gaps for us for many years and they're great partners in getting the work done. So we need to continue to build that as we, as a county, come forward and really step up to the plate and create the supportive networks we need. That means increasing our behavioral health, addiction services, mental health services, as well as finding those opportunities to build supportive and transitional housing for our, our homeless or our unsheltered to move out of unsheltered status and into mainstream community.
Thank you. I'm going to move into something that, you know, we look at our, our, our national issues of the kind of, we call it the lack of collaboration, the infighting, all the kinds of things that we see. And I think most people are much more comfortable with our local politicians. It's kind of boots on the ground. We have a big county and District Four, I'm looking at the map here, goodness, we've got all this Clayton area now, rural. We've got the financial center downtown, Concord, Walla Creek, Pleasant Hill. Just the district alone is big with disparate interests. And then couple that with, we've got five supervisory districts, each one with its own. We've got the West End, which has different interests than the East End. So what I'd like you to both address is the issue of collaboration. How will you, as a supervisor, work within the district itself? And then obviously, work with your other supervisors to solve some of these problems that both of you have just discussed. So Ken, you start with this one.
I'm very proud of the collaborative nature of who I am as a person, let alone the work I've done. You know, you look at my, my list of endorsers, whether that's labor groups or environmental groups or just other elected leaders, it comes from the collaborative work I've done. And I'll use as an example, the League of California Cities. Getting engaged with the League of California Cities from the very beginning of my time on the City Council is just brings that collaborative nature together. We serve in policy committees. We look at and advocate for, in a large setting, bringing 479 out of 482 cities together, all with diverging interests, some rural, some mountain, some coastal, let alone metropolitan, but to be able to sit down together and come up with solutions, come up with direction, advocate and sacrament to meet the needs of our communities. That's by nature who I am. I think if you talk to those across the district, that's why I'm being supported by them is because we can share ideas, whether that's Walla Creek City Council and talking about the, the flash thefts that were going on, you know, and giving my insight to them, or reciprocating when it came to, they moved to pass a ban on flavored tobacco. And collaborating with them is what's working in your city because we're going to bring it to Pleasant Hill. That is who and what I am and what I've done over the last decade. I'm known as kind of a unique police officer in the sense of quite often my cover officer would show up. My suspect, unfortunately, I might have had to arrest, would already be in the back of the car. And they would say, how did you manage to do that? And it would be, it's almost like you, you ask them to get into your car and handed them the handcuffs yourself. It's just who I am in my conversation and how I want to work with and treating people with courtesy and respect.
All right. Deb?
Well, thank you. This, this is a great question. The collaboration among the supervisors is imperative. On a five-county board, I anticipate that is a much easier order than on the nine-county boards that I have, have previously served that are, that are, you know, with BART being five counties represented. You know, I, I'm, I'm coming from a place where I make decisions on behalf of all five counties on every vote that I take. And I look forward to moving to a position where I am taking a vote for the people of Contra Costa. Because I think the interests of the people of Contra Costa are sometimes different. And we see this even at the League of Cities where Contra Costa has a little different take on things than, say, San Francisco. We're, we're struggling in Contra Costa to preserve our way of life here while working with the region to address some of our most serious problems. We are still looking to preserve our more suburban way of life. So in, in the collaboration with local elected leaders, I know just about every one of the City Council members throughout the county. There are a few new ones I haven't had a chance to meet. Many of them were actually endorsed me over the last two races for the BART Board of Directors. But frankly, my opponent sort of jumped into this race about, I don't know, a year or two before I did. And so there, there were a number of people who committed, made commitments and have stuck to their commitments. And I respect them for that. But most of them have also told me behind the scenes, if I win, we will be working together too. So don't let endorsements be the, the premise of who, who is, you know, more popular in this popularity contest. Thanks.
Thanks. I'm going to jump into something that's a little related to what we talked about first, about housing and entitlements and all, but I want to focus on the business side of it. So in the Walla Creek Chamber, the Pleasant Hill Chamber, Concord Chamber, we're all looking at, how do we encourage businesses to not only come in, but to remain? Because as you know, we see people leaving and going to other counties. We see going to the peninsula. And what we need to do is bring businesses in. And we often say, if we build housing, that's great, but our kids can't afford to live in the housing, so they have to live somewhere else. What do we do to encourage business to come into Contra Costa County? In whatever area, but let's say specifically in District Four, encourage them to come and to stay here. And Deb, that's for you.
Well, as a business owner myself for over 35 years, and at one point for 12 years in my career, I owned a pretty good-sized construction company that employed about 60 people. I, I, I have a good sense of what business people want and I, and what they don't want. What they don't want is overregulation and overtaxation. Okay? And so there is a fine line between the interests that want, and there, you know, a lot of interests in our county who, who want rental housing to be regulated and they want, you know, we've been through the last two and a half years of health department regulations on restaurants. And, you know, there were other counties where that didn't occur. And so when those business owners sit down every year and do their taxes and figure out what their budget looks like for the next year, they're taking into account what's left over for them and their families and raising their children and, and, and paying for college. And, you know, how do we attract them? I will tell you how we attract them. I will be very focused on this issue of attracting and retaining our small businesses first. To retain, we listen to them. And so I will definitely have a small business roundtable. I've been active in many of these chambers, not only yours, but I represent nine cities. So I don't make it to all of your events because I'm in lots of other events too. But I, we, we, we retain them by listening to them. We, we attract them by creating an environment that people want to come to. And that environment must include us addressing traffic. It must include, you know, a workforce that is well-trained and motivated to go to work. And it must include a, a, and, and initiative, which is what I planned to put together, an initiative with our county Economic Development Department to, 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 to spend some more money to go out and really look for. Uh, department to um, to 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 spend some more money to go out and really look for. Industry, small industry, startup industries, startup businesses that are willing to come to our county. We can't just focus on the smallest of our businesses. We've got to start focusing on. You know, perhaps looking at an entire industry to come here and we also have to look at the jobs. Housing balance. Everybody says they want more housing, but the fact of the matter is forty-two percent. Of the residents of this county, working residents of this county actually get in their car and drive out of our county to go to work every day. And so we have to figure out how are we going to attract more middle class paying, uh, better paying jobs to this county.
Thank you. Ken.
There's there's so much work still to be done. I mean, in the housing alone, there's opportunity to develop and grow and to bring. Uh, projects to Contra Costa County. Streamlining our our processes for getting our entitlements. Um, not letting Sequo being what being weaponized to delay and put our developers in. Uh, you know, two and three year entitlement processes. So there are ways we can do it. Um, some we've already initiated. Technology is a big part of this. In Pleasant Hill, we've uh, uh streamlined our solar um. Permitting process where it's done, it all digitally, all electronically, it could be done at midnight and you'll have your permit within twenty-four hours. Uh, we're doing this in our development projects as well. Uh, your pro- your programs, your your plans. Uh, everything can be submitted digitally, um, saving your trips to City Hall, saving you costs and time and energy. But we have to collaborate, we have to work with our business community. Uh, this is something I've done through my Economic Development Committee service. Eight years plus, serving on that committee, listening to and talking to. Early on, when I came to. Um, the Pleasant Hill City Council, uh, we have a small light industrial area that been somewhat marginalized. Um, and not really paid much attention to over the course of several years. So it was a matter of partnering with Cal E D. Bringing Cal E D in and and now analyzing what were the needs of those business owners down there. Then understanding zoning and and land use issues. So that we could go in there and figure out, do we need to change the zoning? Do we need to make things easier for our businesses? To come into our light industrial area and actually get to work. So we need to develop new ideas. If we're gonna bring new businesses here, we have to be get a partnership. We can go out and we can reach out to biotech and other light manufacturing and other uh, industries. But until we partner with those developers, they're gonna build the infrastructure or build the buildings they need. As we go out and we talk about uh, bioengineering and biotech, um, great opportunities arise for us. But it takes infrastructure that we really have very little of and we need to develop those buildings. We need to make that as much more efficient. Much more smooth process to get it out. And that's where we need to collaborate regionally, having the support of city councils across the district. Makes it easier for us all to come together and do this in a much broader and regional sense. To be more thoughtful in our land use decision making, so that we can bring this type of industry and or processes to Contra Costa County.
Thank you. Um, now let's get into this big one. Not that the others aren't big, but public safety. And when we look at Contra Costa County, uh, I call, we have the three largest entities that are involved with public safety. The Contra Costa County Fire Protection District, a wonderful organization, very large organization, the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office. And the Contra Costa County District Attorney's Office, uh, important. And certainly their budgets fall under the purview of the County Board of Supervisors. So lots of things to talk about in that area, but I'd like each of you to give us your plans for addressing issues. Of public safety, uh, and how you can work with those those entities as well as other. Uh, public safety entities in the county to get us where uh. The citizens can feel some comfort because I'm telling you, from what I hear, there is some discomfort. And Ken?
Wow, you bring up a very challenging topic, given the world we live in right now. But with twenty-nine years in law enforcement and closely collaborating with the DA's office. Uh, the Fire Department, working with them, boots on the ground, day in and day out for almost thirty years. Um, have strong relationships and ties to all three of them. But it's it's a broad subject that we need to think about in a social justice sense. Realigning our incarceration um, policies, restorative justice issues, um, youth offender programs. Then we have to build the community trust and that's one of the critical issues I think we need to work on because we're facing staffing levels. Uh, within our police agencies that uh, are being challenging, they're just challenging to me. No one uh, is is applying. Or those that are applying are not qualified and don't meet the standards. Um, and so we've got to fill those positions. But how do you do that without without fear factor playing into that, whether it's on both sides? So uh, I think we need to really, really focus on going back to core values. Um, I I, you know, with twenty-nine years on, I started when it was problem oriented policing, it was pop. Uh, and then we moved into community oriented policing and 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 we really need to kind of go back to those core values of building community trust. Meeting with our community um, and and focusing in on it. But again, it's a lot of work. Taking out, uh, we were talking about closing down uh, the Byron Ranch, our youth incarceration facility. Um, and moving everything over to juvenile hall. Is that the best environment? For them, uh, when it comes to education and rehabilitation, is incarceration the right answer or support programs the right answer? So all of these things overlapped, addressing how we're gonna deliver mental health services, taking mental health and social service type response calls out of police hands. And putting those in the hands of trained professionals who are mental health professionals, social service professionals, our our CFS workers. Those types of individuals um, who can do and deliver the services better. And that relieves the officers of having to do. Non-police work essentially and go out and address preventative crime patrols, um, proactive enforcement. And actually have better response times, more time to investigate uh, and prosecute those crimes in partnership with the DA's office. So it's really, uh, the question is huge, when you really think about it because it's so multifaceted.
Thank you. Uh, Deb.
Thank you. Um, I too have strong relationships with all three of the county public safety groups. You mentioned uh. The DA's, the the Sheriff's Office and the and Fire. Um, I am endorsed by the Contra Costa Deputy Sheriff's Association as well as three other uh, police associations. Uh, with with respect to incarceration, I still believe in incarceration and particularly in at our youth level. That we should not be closing down juvenile halls, we should be when when uh, youth. Commit a crime that is serious, uh, and are sentenced, uh, you know, they should be sentenced to incarceration for the. More serious crimes, but what we probably need to do a little differently is make sure that once that happens, that we have an environment where we can. Actually provide services to these youth that will help them, uh, not only, um, you know. Oftentimes find education, uh, but also once they have served that they are transitioned correctly back into uh, regular life. I think the same thing goes for adults in incarceration. We've we've missed opportunities over the last decades. Um, to really help people transition after they've served uh, their sentence. Um, you know, I want to comment on taking social service calls out of the hands of police officers. We actually did this at Bart, starting um, two and a half years ago, uh, began a program, as I mentioned, the Crisis Intervention Specialists. And and you know, the way the whole thing shook out in the end. Was that we still have a police officer escorting those social, social service uh, people around our system. Why? Because you just never know in a split second. When a person in crisis is going to become a dangerous person that you need uh, more than a social worker for. Um, we have, we are experimenting in this county with some field teams. Uh, and and I I, I have not heard that that's going incredibly well, but I think it's still getting off the ground. Uh, but I certainly would not want to see uh, trained behavioral health specialists. Responding to mental health crisis without police officers accompanying them. Uh, so at the end of the day, what we're really, what we really should be doing is supplementing policing. With this additional, with this additional help in behavioral health. Uh, and supplementing policing with frankly, um, as much help as we can give them. They've been through a terrible ordeal over the last two and a half years, being attacked and blamed for all of society's social ills. And I am one of a few, very few elected leaders in this county who has actually stood up publicly. And um, you know, supported our officers at Bart when they were under attack by. By protesters who were invited to our meeting by my own board directors. Uh, to to talk about defunding the police. So uh, talk about irony here and now, you know, as I said, no good deed goes unpunished. Um, I'm being criticized for uh, actually taking that stand now. Uh, I think I'm probably over your time limit. But I could go on, this is a complex topic. I could go on about policing, about fire, uh. And and about our, you know, we didn't really get a chance to talk about the deputy uh, district attorneys. Um, you know, we just went through an election for our top district attorney in this county and there, I can tell you there was a lot of um. Uh, a lot of contentious debate over uh, the positions that uh, our district attorney takes. Who funded her uh, for her election, being funded by, you know, a lot of money from the Soros. Uh, George Soros people and the Victory Funds, uh, and uh, did that really belong in our county?
Alright, thanks. And I will say that, yes, we could, each one of these subjects is huge and we could spend the entire time. And even if we spent an hour on it, we probably uh, wouldn't solve it. But so I want to move on to. A huge issue. And you're saying, oh, another one, yes, budgeting. And both of you have talked about experience with budgeting. Uh, our county is a huge county. It requires lots of collaboration among the supervisors because instead of just little cities and things, this is a huge. We have all the different areas, the districts and those entities that we just talked about that uh. You you have to look at in this big overall budget. So uh, I, perhaps the best question just be asked, what are your budget priorities going in? Just the concept of what priorities do you have? Cause it's a big issue. And Ken?
Thank you. Um, it really is to see to it that we're maintaining uh, and providing those vital services that we're doing. Um, and need to continue to provide. Again, at the city level, um, we do this every day. What are our capital improvement needs? Uh, what are our economic development needs? What are our affordable housing income, you know, our how affordable housing needs? Um, a broad array of, uh, you know, traffic, um. And roadway improvements, our street resurfacing programs. Um, this is what I've been doing for a decade now is is prioritizing those needs. On a broader sense, the county, we have numerous partnerships with our nonprofit world who are supplementing the services that we want to provide. So how do we prioritize those? We need to do those in a transparent way when uh, you know, we we passed Measure X. Uh, which I fully and wholeheartedly supported because it was gonna add to uh, our needs and and our ability to meet county needs. Um, and it was listening to our Measure X Advisory Committee and knowing and and gleaning through the process of. Um, what services continue to be needed and and met. Um, and this is, this is again, goes to the collaborative nature of what I do, having an open and transparent budgeting process. Um, where it's not just made by the decision makers in the back room or the um, administrators and the department heads. Um, it it needs to be an open and transparent discussion because it's very broad and very wide. Um, but we need to look at uh, affordable housing and and what are those resources and what programs are there out there that we can fund? And or seek funding for, um, as well as actively and aggressively pursuing grant funding opportunities. Uh, we have ARPA funds available to us, we have infrastructure uh, money out of uh. Washington and then we have the Inflation Reduction Act with, again, gives us opportunity to reach out for additional funding for infrastructure. And other projects throughout the county. So it's it's again, another broad subject. We could have another two hour meeting just on the budget alone. Because there's a lot of line items that need to be thought about uh, each and every day. But we continue to get complaints about the conditions of our roadways, uh, meeting our our climate needs. Um, sewer, storm drains, uh, it it it's everything that I've been dealing with for the last ten years.
And Deb?
Well, thank you. This is the, of course, this is most known, this is the strong suit for me, having spent a career as a CPA and in finance. And um, frankly, you know, managing seven billion dollars of invested assets on the pension board as well as now currently the last six years. Two point four billion dollar annual budget at Bart. Uh, the county's general fund is about one point three billion. Uh, overall, if you include the the hospital. Um, uh, fund, then you you get a county budget at about four point four billion. Um, so what are my part, my priorities are going to be modernizing this county. Um, so it can provide efficiently and effectively provide the services. That we've been talking about here, then the behavioral help of helping homeless people. Um, you know, addiction services and, you know, public safety, housing, the whole list, public works. I have spent the last uh, ten months actually out talking to just people who are county workers. And uh, having them explain to me what, you know, what they think about their own workplace. Because at the end of the day, if we want to keep county workers, which by the way, there's a huge workforce shortage going on, not just in policing, but everywhere. Um, if we want to keep county workers, uh, we have to be competitive in our pay, but we also have to provide an environment. Where they're not banging their head against the wall because they can't get anything done. And that is the case in some of our departments in this county. So um, we are, we are woefully behind in modernizing and technology in this county. And I think that the additional reserve funds uh, that we have from ARPA. Uh, some of that funding should be invested in how we bring this county uh, out of, you know, the nineteen nineties and into the modern day. Um, now what that will do is that will streamline things and hope, I'm hopeful that we will employ fewer people. That doesn't mean going and laying off a bunch of people, but that means over a time, a period of time, becoming more efficient. In a way that we can um, have the the number of people in our budget be appropriate. And we can uh, be more efficient freeing up money for other things that we need to spend, we need to increase the budget for. Like all those other services we provide. Um, so workforce shortage, um, this is the perfect time for us to do the streamlining when we are short on workers. This is the perfect time for us to figure out how to get the job done with fewer people. And this workforce shortage is not gonna go away anytime soon.
The next question I want to ask has to do with uh, the county hospital and county health system. So we've known for years and years and years that many, many people who are uh. Out of work, have all kinds of issues, uh, rely very much on our county health system. Through Medi-Cal, you often hear of people, the only place they can go is to sit for hours at the county hospital. Uh, emergency room, uh, trying to get treatment. And I do understand that it's a very large part of the county budget. The the often, so I'd just like you and Deb, you're next in line for this to discuss issues related to county hospital. And the county health plan and what can we do to? As we say, streamline it to make it more cost efficient, provide more services, what can be done? Big question again.
Well, streamlining and efficiency that requires uh, really assessments. Uh, somebody has to come in and actually assess the programs. That are being provided, what their metrics are, what their budgets are, and so that would require some assessment over probably a year or period of time. If um, if, you know, Board of Supervisors was willing to take that on. Um, the, you know, the the county hospital was studied. Uh, I don't know how many years ago, but not 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 a lot of years ago. Uh, there was a study and you know, this this has been a um, a talking point for a while, should the county hospital be folded into the local hospitals? Which we we enjoy really terrific uh, medical and uh, hospital services in this valley. From all of our private providers. Um, and so this has been bounced around, uh, could we free up a lot of budget money by by. Turning the county hospital over to um, private providers to uh. Um, to take on, and I believe this, the result of the study was that this Board of Supervisors chose that that it did not seem feasible. So for me, everything is about feasibility. chose that, that it did not seem feasible. So for me, everything is about feasibility and I'm, I have not read the study that they did, but I, I take that at face value that, that they made the right decision. That doesn't mean that I won't be asking these questions going forward into the future as we go forward about how can we be more efficient. I think that there is an opportunity perhaps to do JPA with local providers on some of the services that are provided under the Medi-Cal programs. As, as you know, as long as those service providers are willing to provide within those, those payment schedules.
All right, and Ken.
So healthcare is a challenge across the county, not only just in county services, but workforce. We, through the pandemic, saw numerous people lose, leave the healthcare industry, just burnout. Granted fatigue, early retirement. And we're facing a workforce shortage. And we need to address that and we need to create career pathways to get people into the healthcare industry, something that I have done through the John Muir Community Health Fund, just over the last couple of years, because we recognize that going forward, the healthcare needs continue to rise, but those that are providing the services drop. And that's part of the problem with the timeliness of services at the county hospital and our clinics is, is just staffing. We need to up, up our game and hire. But again, it's, it's getting them into the workforce and through educational pathways. Our CARES program, Contagious Cares is still not at full enrollment. So we need to do that and we need to aggressively go after Medi-Cal and Medicare reimbursements. Whether it's a private hospital or the county hospital, our reimbursements are significantly lower than the actual cost of the services we provide. So we need to really be strong advocates in, in Washington and Sacramento to address those shortfalls. It, it's, it's just there's, again, it, it is, it is a significant issue we're facing in West County with the closure of, of doctors out there. Our West County residents are sufficiently, significantly deficient in access to healthcare there. So again, I, this is where I go to building partnerships. We've seen partnerships work with our nonprofit partners. Several of our local clinics, nonprofit clinics have sought and gotten federally qualified as healthcare providers. Whether that's for VA services or Medicare services, they're going to be the ones to fill the gaps until we can get our act together and figure out exactly what needs to be done to make access to healthcare much more efficient. And again, a part of that is just like Deborah said, technology, how we're working with our medical records, how we're working with our appointments online. We're moving towards even more of our telehealth. And that's a way of closing the gap, but we have to educate those people that are seeking the services and how to manage that system. But I think closing the gaps through telehealth, educational pathways, we could be much more efficient by fully staffing those shortages we face at our hospital. We're seeing this even in our private healthcare facilities. I mean, if you've, if you've noticed the news, our mental health providers are out picketing three days a week in front of our Kaiser facility in Walnut Creek because our mental health, people seeking behavioral health and mental health support services are, are being pushed off for weeks and months beyond what's one legally mandated now, but two, necessary for their general well-being and care.
But speaking of care, a question that came up on the, is about the Hale property and I'm wondering if that's that Seven Hills area because one of our participants, one of our people who's in asked this question about the number of people supporting the continuing community care, the continuing care community that is planned for that site and on the Hale property. I'm assuming that is the Seven Hills project? I don't know. The question is, and I'll ask you Ken, is if elected, how do you plan to deal with that issue?
Well, it's inappropriate for me to opine on something that I would potentially vote on. You know, the plan is this would go in front of the Board of Supervisors before the end of the year. However, appeals could be filed and it could still be something that lands in front of me when I'm on the Board of Supervisors. So it's hard to say. We need senior care facilities. We need facilities to care for our aging population. I'm fast moving there. You know, we, we hit those milestones in our life and we're going to have shortages, not only in the healthcare. You know, workers, but in facilities and those areas. And we want to provide for our seniors in a, in a way that, that gives them equality of life and dignity. I, I think this is, is possibly one of those opportunities. The other side of that coin is, is if that project doesn't go through with the zoning that's there or the potential zoning that could be brought forward, plus density bonuses, you could find significantly greater impacts by a large potential housing development in there that might even cause greater impacts than what we might see from this facility. But again, it would be inappropriate for me to opine or to, to take a position at this point in time.
Okay, fair enough. Deb.
Same legal disclosure as Ken. I can't really tell you how I would vote on the current project. But I can say this. So, so these projects take many, you know, a decade to get even to the point where, where a, a Board of Supervisors is going to vote on a final approval and they can actually start moving the dirt. So I can tell you that, you know, if I had been involved in this project from the very beginning, I would have hoped for a focus for that property on starter homes, owned, ownership homes for our young working families. I think there's not a lot of opportunity for them right now in this valley and that, that could have been a perfect place for that. Originally, I was concerned about this project that it would not contribute to the RENA numbers, the state mandated housing numbers. But I've since resolved that and been told that this actually will count toward the county's housing development goals. And so for that reason, I think we have to move forward with, with what we've been mandated by the state. So that, that's about as much as I can say about that issue.
All right. Thanks very much. You know, both of you have said it that we could sit here for hours and hours. And I think this is very interesting. I think people are getting to know the two of you a little bit. And I'm certainly getting to know you even more than I already knew you and I know you both. What I want now is, because we're right towards the end, I'm going to ask for maybe a, a, a two minute kind of recitation or that you would each like to give to kind of end this thing. And then we'll kick it back to Bob Lynchide. And Ken, I'll give it to you for the, for the wrap up.
Thank you. I, I, once again, my thanks to you, Matt and Bob and the Walnut Creek Chamber and all the chambers that are participating here today and our lecturers and our business leaders. This is really important to have these conversations and to, to get together and to share our ideas. It's great to hear your questions, but it would be much nicer to hear your ideas as well. So when the opportunity arises, I look forward to, to meeting together and hearing what your thoughts are, what our priorities should be, what we can do to make those things happen, to bolster our business community. This is something we, we truly need to do. It's, 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 it's so important to us. We received our regional housing needs allocation numbers, and they were supposed to be based on a ratio of jobs to housing, housing to jobs. And what we found is, is that our number of housing units is much higher than our projected growth in jobs. So seeing as we've tried to appeal, every, every city and the county appealed our RENA allocation and lost. But being, that being said, then maybe it falls to us. And this is my, my personal views that we should much more aggressively pursue that economic development goal. We should be out there then trying to raise that number of job growth. Bringing those people to Contra Costa County to work here. This is a great place to live, work, play, raise a family. I've spent, like I say, my entire life here. I don't know that you're going to be able to pry me out of this county until my final hours. But again, I, I really look forward to the job. I'm excited to get to work starting next year and work on things like economic development, growing jobs here, bringing business here, supporting our business community, streamlining the processes of being a business owner in this community and bringing new technology and new, and new, new manufacturing and things like biotech to the region. We've missed some opportunities. Conversations have been had as far as autonomous vehicles, which are going out at the Naval Weapons Station, but there's autonomous flying vehicles and we kind of missed an opportunity there to bring them to Buchanan Field as opposed to those corporations taking them off all the way to Oregon. So I look forward to continuing the work I've done, whether that's in economic development, healthcare, land use. Again, I am supported by the majority of elected leaders throughout the district, let alone across the region. And it becomes, it, it comes from that collaborative nature of who I am, of the ability to sit down at the table with them, share ideas, not to marginalize or cancel anybody out and to bring us together to make decisions that are in the best interest of this county, the communities we live in. I've been doing that for 10 years. Like I say, with land use, making decisions on housing. I've worked on our, our general plan, the vision of what's going on in Pleasant Hill, as well as input through the Hazardous Materials Commission and the Airport Land Use Commission serving the county as to what the vision for Contra Costa County is going forward. I've devoted a lot of time and energy to our housing issues, working on our housing element, updating our housing element to meet the mandates of Sacramento. On top of that, I have actually advocated voraciously in Sacramento to preserve our ability to have the autonomy and the decision-making ability about our land use issues, about our hand housing issues. So that we can meet our mandates, but do it in a way that is consistent and conducive to the communities that we live in. So that we're not turning into a hodgepodge of high density or, or tall apartment buildings, that we can do this in a cohesive and thoughtful manner. And we continue to get mandates out of Sacramento that we need to, to continue to challenge, to protect ourselves, to give us that autonomy. So I look forward to doing that as your next supervisor. If you need more information, go to kencarlson.vote. Feel free to email me, call me. I'm happy to talk about all of the issues.
Thank you, Ken. Deb, your wrap up, please.
Well, thank you to the chambers for, for hosting this today. It's really important for business owners to really get a peek at who, who will be leading their county. Our county needs a strong leader with a broad experience. Someone willing to make difficult decisions with thoughtfulness, analysis and independence from special interests and political parties. Regardless of what you see in the hit pieces against me, I am politically independent of parties. I have friends on both sides and I have support from both sides. Experience matters. My work in executive financial management as a construction business owner gave me an insider's view of how government can impede progress by putting up unnecessary and expensive barriers to change for businesses. As trustee on the county board of the county pension board, I was a leader in solutions to the spiraling unfunded pension obligations, which only add to the tax burden of the people of this county. Today, our pension system is now one of the strongest in the state because of a policy that we did 10 years ago on that board. I'm the only candidate elected to the governing board of a five county agency with a two and a half billion dollar annual budget and over 4,000 workers and five bargaining unions, units. In my five years, six years at BART now, I worked on a variety of policy issues, including regional transportation, policing, housing, homelessness, clean energy, large infrastructure construction, and a whole lot of work that I didn't mention in adding oversight to the BART board in the form of the Office of Inspector General. We're getting ready to undertake a financial structural review of how all of finance works at BART. And I was the first Chair of the Standing Audit Committee. Believe it or not, they didn't have an audit committee when I got there. I fought for common sense solutions to long entrenched problems and worked hard for improvements to protect public safety. Contra Costa needs a strong advocate who can represent the interests of all residents when addressing Bay Area regional problems. My passion is good governance that works for everyone. And I'll bring that passion to the county Board of Supervisors. I hope I can count on your support and vote on June 7th. You can learn more at deborahallen.com. Thank you.
Thanks very much to both of you. I'm going to kick it back over to Bob Lynchide, our CEO to finish up.
Yeah. Thank you, Deborah and Ken, for your thoughtful presentations and discussions today. We really, really appreciate it. And Matt, to you for your consistent moderation skills. We appreciate you as well. I just want to highlight a couple of things before we adjourn. First and foremost, this weekend, our, our friends at Walnut Creek Downtown are hosting the annual Oktoberfest. There's plenty of opportunity to volunteer. If you need more information, it's available at Walnut Creek downtown.com or through the chamber website as well. We do have some information on that coming event. And lastly, I just want to call everybody's attention to a collaboration between five chambers of Concord, Pleasant Hill, Martinez, Walnut Creek and Lafayette. It's called Mixpo. It's going to be a trade show, Mixer Expo at the Pleasant Hill Community Center on, on November 10th, the day before Veterans Day. It's an opportunity to see and witness exhibitors throughout the county located in one location. Each chamber is, is providing opportunity for booths. And lastly, we're excited to announce that the East Bay Women's Conference will be moved to the Leshur Center for the Arts in Walnut Creek in March, March 7th, 2023. It's a sold out event. So be watching for information. We'll be announcing some of the keynote speakers very soon. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance today, to our candidates, to our moderator and to all of you. Have a, have a good day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.